July, May?
Yes. Call tonight's study session in order and make our first number one. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. See, the, our fire department is here in full force, so it's good to see you guys and gals, if there are any gals out there. Anyway, we have a presentation from the fire department tonight on two subjects. One, the fire department CON, and the second on fire station relocation. So Chief, I'll throw it to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have about five to six items that we'll be covering over one presentation. And the concept behind this is how they interweave with each other and work to support each other as we go through. And with that, I'll always start off with our mission statement, our vision statement, and of course, our department values. And this is the one that we had created back in 2015 with our strategic plan. The items I'm looking to cover this evening are the vitals of the department, talk a little bit about the low acuity pilot program, the SAFER grant award, the city of Casa Grande CON process, fire station replacement plan with the GO bond, and then kind of next steps and timelines to kind of bring everything together. And Chief Keane and I will be tag teaming as we go through the presentation. So as I mentioned earlier, this is, this presentation will allow us to show how these initiatives and opportunities will work together to provide a solution to the city as we move forward addressing our community needs and maintaining the quality of life in our community. Current vitals, what I'm kind of looking at here is this is a snapshot of the fire department. We've had the opportunity back the end of July, Chief Keane or myself, or both of us and the city manager had an opportunity to meet with you and talk about some discussion points. Some of this you'll have already recognized, I'm just bringing it up kind of in the snapshot. Our city property, primary property tax, there would've been no increase through 2019. And of course, the sales tax, the city has maintained strong with the 2% over that same period of time. And I'm looking back pretty much 2008 to 2019 is the area I'm looking at. Obviously, in the parentheses to show everybody what the actual tax is with the county piece of it, so. The staffing per day, in 2008, we were with 16 firefighters on duty per day, that's with the four engine companies with a staffing of four on each truck made up of the three platoon system. In current, today, as of 2019, we are sitting with 16 firefighters on duty per day. We have not had an increase or done anything to change our deployment. Our firefighters per 1,000 population, back in 2008, we were sitting at 1.32 per 1,000 population in our community. In 2019, we are sitting at .98, about a 26% reduction, and that's because our population has continued to increase out there. NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, recommends a 1.1 to a 1.5 per 1,000 population. Our annual calls for service, in 2008, we were running 5,892 calls in that calendar year. In 2018, the full calendar year, the last one, is 9,427 calls that we ran during that calendar year, which is a 60% increase in our call load since 2008. Our average calls per day is right at 16.14 back in 2008, and in 2018, it's 25.89 per day. Again, equates to the same with the call load, 60% increase. Our ISO grading, which is the insurance service office, we, in 2008 was a class four, and the recommendation at that time was that we were an engine company down. And our last regrading, which was in 2018, we were able to reduce to a class three, however, we are still an engine company down. The reason we did do a decrease is that we had invested in some data, the CAD system, the RMS system, our image trend, which is our EMS, RMS system, records management system. So there was a number of things that we had done in order to help and improve that.
Chief, so the class three is better than a class four?
Yes, sir. It ranges from a class one to a class 10, class one being the best that you can be.
Thank you.
Our average response time in 2008 was at six minutes, and in 2019, our response time is set at five minutes and 23 seconds. We did put in the citywide opticon system that we installed back in 2009, 10, which is all the traffic signals that have those lights on it, picks up the sensors from our emitters on the vehicles, and then it goes from a safety on the traffic light to give us a green to go through. And basically, that reduced us down, when we started that, I think it was close to 45 to 50 seconds is what that major reduction was, and we're slowly going back up on that. Another item to discuss on here is the average unit hour utilization for first-stop fire department units. Ours is sitting at a .27, and that's an average. I'll share with you, if you'd like, the individual for the stations. But the unit hours, the way you figure that out is you would take 24 hours a day times 365 days, that gives you a total of 8,760 hours within that calendar year. And then you take the total calls that you run and divide it by that 8,760 hours, that gives you your unit hour utilization. And in the indicators, a .16 to a .24 is considered an ideal commitment where you need to be, that you're able, your crews can maintain their training, they can do their physical training also, and they can meet the response times. As you get busier, .25, there's what they call system stress, your first due units are responding to your area, to their main area about 75% of the time. Then you hit to 2 point, or .26 to .29 is evaluation range, that you're experiencing delays because there's so many calls going on, other units are responding from different stations. And then you have a .3, which means basically, it's not a sustainable system to be sitting in. When I break it down from the individual stations, our average is .27, however, when you look in 2018, station 501 was at a .38, station 502 is a .33, station 503 is a .17, and station 504 is a .16. When I look at currently year-to-date, in 2019 calendar, the station 501 remains at a .38, 502 is at a .32, station 503 is a .19, and station 504 is a .20. So that's where we're at currently on our unit hour utilization per each station. Obviously, we do understand that the increase in staffing, there's been a lack of revenue, there is a lot of revenue coming in to be able to bring up and put additional resources on. So as I continue on, you'll see where we look for alternatives, we look for grant funding, and see what we can do to help us out, to move in that direction. What I want to touch base next on was our low acuity program that we put in place for 90 days. I know we have a couple of new council members since we did do that pilot program. This pilot program was done for a three-month period back in March, April, and May of 2015. What the department decided to do is that we would add two additional firefighters per shift to staff that low acuity and run a 90-day pilot, and see what the data showed and how it came out. So that's what we did. Low acuity unit stands for basically, it's a BLS, or basic life support type of unit with two medically trained personnel onboard, and they would handle the lower acuity of the calls, not your severe ones like a cardiac arrest and some of the others, and I'll go through that in just a second here to explain the difference. The, the unit was able, obviously, to save safer travels with responding code two, because they're going to a lower acuity, doesn't mean they have to be going code three. Code two's normal traffic, code three is emergency traffic. Rescue 501 is what we had staffed, and it picked up 20% of the call load during that three-month period from the all-risk ALS units, which is our engine companies. So they were available for the higher priority calls. The items we consider in that higher level of care would be cardiac arrest, difficulty breathing, strokes, broken hips, legs, trauma patients involved in motor vehicle accidents, blunt trauma, stabbing, shootings, machinery accidents, allergic reactions, et cetera, fall into the ALS category, where they'd have to utilize the additional skills, the medications, the drugs, the monitoring equipment that they carry. Station 501, during that three-month period, had 230 times total concurrent calls in March, April, and May. And what I mean by that is that they were on 230 total calls, and then 156 times they were on different times. So in other words, 230 times they ran together, and then the rescue unit could take care of it, and the engine could be freed up, or they ran 156 times separate calls in station one's area. Rescue 501 ended up transporting six times during this pilot program. Additional outcomes, rescue 501's medic rode into the hospital 72 times, which allowed the engine to remain in service for the higher acuity ALS calls. One of the things we saw is there was a reduction in our diesel fuel from running the larger vehicle to running the smaller vehicle during that period of time. We saved 860 gallons of diesel fuel versus the previous period of time. Response times decreases both code two and code three, our calls went down because the rescue was running code two and thus taken away and leaving the code three for the ALS engine companies to run. We had increased customer service, we had patient refusals for transport 83 times, which meant the system didn't have to get overloaded and have that transport piece of it. Both engine 503 and 504 were moving out of their first due areas less with this pilot program because they were, stayed up in the northern part of the city. Some additional outcomes, our mutual aid partners were being called less for coverage. In fact, the rescue 504 covered four move-ups in March, eight in April, and eight in May, which that meant is they provided medical coverage immediately versus waiting up to 15 minutes to get our mutual aid partners in the city limits. Because you still have their travel time for their communities, whether it's Eloy or Gila River or Maricopa. And we're very grateful for the relationships we have with these departments, because they do respond into our city numerous times. This last year, if I'm not mistaken, they came into the city around 160 times, and we only left the city around 52 times during that calendar year. So you can see the dependency of the resources we use in the mutual aid agreements. There's less need for internal citywide move-ups with five units. As I mentioned earlier, the rescue unit was able to move up initially to cover for medical. When we get down to only one resource, we moved our resource to Treco and Cottonwood, and that's where we put our citywide unit until we get more resources back, because that way it's in the center, and it cuts down the response time to get anywhere we need to go, north, south, east, west. It also allowed for increased training time, fiscal agility time, the projects that our captains and engineers and firefighters work on, pre-emergency, pre-planning, that's what PEP is stands for, area familiarization for both engine 501 and LT 502. So they were able to increase with the low acuity unit being in service. Rescue 501 obviously would have an easier time if there was any construction sites, roadway detours, any kind of routing issues, because it's smaller and easier to adapt and move quicker. There's a reduced perception of customers seeing a pumper on every EMS call, and then the fire department seeing us being physically, or fiscally responsible. Reliability EMS system increases because of that additional unit that we have up in our city, and increased life expectancy of the engine could actually lengthen out, instead of being the 12 years that we're pretty well wearing an engine out, we may be able to stretch it out as we put low acuity units, or look in the future at a CON that allows the smaller units to run most of the calls. Obviously, the low acuity unit, it's been seen as a positive thing to try to get it up, both from the council standpoint, I know the last few years we've talked about budget sessions, and you've asked for us to be able to bring it up. Obviously, there's a revenue challenge that's there, and we haven't been able to, so we could not bring up the personnel. I think the low acuity unit is, and I'm just kind of seguing in here to their next areas, the low acuity unit is a great transition into a CON or rescue unit because it's that step in between as we're continuing to move up the staircase. Also, I'll be touching base on the SAFER grant, and this allows for low acuity to be staffed 24/7, and I'll go into that when I talk a little bit about the SAFER grant and the letter that we've received there. So in September, last month, a couple weeks ago in 2019, we received a letter, an award letter, from the SAFER grant, which, which, excuse me, which we had members of our department, I want to thank Battalion Chief LaFalls and Assistant Chief Keane, they were ones that compiled the grant and able to submit it. It's a strenuous competition that's out there for personnel through the SAFER grant, and it's all funded through the Department of Homeland Security. What happens is the grant, the grant is over a three-year period of time. It's the grant award that the feds, the feds would pay, it would be $1,715,986. They basically, over that three-year period, cover two-thirds of the cost of the additional firefighters. The grant we put in was for 10 firefighters for the department. The breakout of those positions were six firefighters for the low acuity unit, and then three firefighters for an additional rover per shift. And that would allow our personnel to be able to take the earned benefit time that they receive through the city to be able to use it, so I don't have some people losing it. Because current, we only allow two people off per day to utilize their benefits because we just don't have the coverage, and the overtime goes up through the roof. When I talk earned benefits, you can be looking at the, we have our two systems, the PTO, UPTO, vacation sick, family sick, we have bereavement, we have personal day, all of those items I have to still cover and maintain coverage within the city. And the last position for a firefighter was set for an internal promotion as we're moving forward with our EMS, takes a lot for us to concentrate on all the requirements, licenses, certifications, quality assurance programs, et cetera, that we need to have a manager in charge of that, an EMS BC. So this other firefighter position was the concept of being able to come up from the bottom when we do internal promotions to cover that position as an EMS BC. Couple of things I'll cover here is on our rovers. We have currently two rovers on each shift with the department now. We have a total of five that are full-time in the field, we have one that's in an academy class right now, so it will give us the two finally per shift. Those rovers, each of them are roughly hours of, 2,912 hours of coverage for each. So when you add those together, you, obviously, you come up with, I think it's around 17, or 17,000, 18,000 hours, and somewhere in that. I didn't write down the exact. However, over the years, we have been short, even though we have the rovers, we're still paying overtime out for additional hours to cover the things that we do in the department. The concept behind the additional rover is to give us another three people at 2912, which will bring us over about 8,700 hours plus. And right now, we're right around 9,000 hours of overtime that we're estimating this year in addition to what our rovers can cover. So those rovers would actually help us out so there'd be less overtime in the future as we move forward. So we're very pleased, very happy about the grant award. These guys worked real hard, and there was a lot of eyes that were on it to reviewing it, and that's quite a significant grant for us to receive. Obviously, that'll be dependent as we move to steps in that, dependent on the council's acceptance of a grant. The next item I'd like to touch base upon is the city of Casa Grande CON. And I'm not going to go back into a lot of details, I'm just going to kind of touch on some of the points that are positive, the benefits of a CON. Obviously, it allows the city to be in control of its destiny. It provides the city with revenue to hire fire personnel to staff rescue ambulances. And obviously, with the grant that we have, that low acuity coming in gives us the buildup going up for the three years, get the low acuity unit going, and then look at the CON again, if the council gives us direction to apply for the CON. And then we apply and move forward with that, the revenue that would come in from that then would continue to grow our services to provide that level. Continuity of patient care from home to hospice is improved. The fire service-based EMS are strategically positioned to deliver critical response and effective patient care. Our feasibility study that we did conduct through the Jay Benson Group recommended that we would have four dedicated ambulances in our city to handle the call load when we would start up. The EMS system reliability increases with us having four dedicated units in our system. The single-unit response on BLS calls, so we would just be sent in just like the low acuity would handle two-person lower, that would be the same way with the CON, you just would continue that process versus having one, you would have four units that would respond. It allows to keep the four-person ALS engine company available for the critical life-threatening calls, and I mentioned these earlier, what those are and what we look at. Because when you get involved in any of these particular calls types, you're looking for multiple hands-on. Everybody is at work, all four personnel that's on that truck, they all have specific assignments and jobs that they need to handle in order to get everything done in a quick amount of time so it can be transported and patient can get to the hospital. So that's why we have the four-person units for ALS. The CON, continuing on, reduced response times within our community for our customers, increased customer service, and then we would have a reduced perception of, obviously, as I mentioned earlier with the low acuity, of seeing an engine on every EMS call. And again, I know there's redundancy, but both of them provide the same kind of benefit, increasing the life expectancy of an engine company out, further out than the 12 years. Low acuity unit obviously is a great transition into the CON and the rescue transports, and the SAFER grant does allow for the low acuity to be staffed 24/7. From a fire station overview, we've talked about this also in CIP meetings and at budget meetings, about looking for a solution, what can we do in order to get our station strategically planned? We came to the council a few years ago and asked for a software to be purchased, which was called DECKIN, and it's an analytic software program that helps us with that. So we did get the funding and move forward with that purchase. What we're looking at is a global vision for long-range planning, so when I get down to it, Chief Keane will talk about the actual, how that all works, because he's the expert with the software. But the goal is to look and provide in a plan for all the six fire stations, and others is necessary to, due to growth. And then from that concept is backing out to five stations and then backing out the four stations, saying where these four would go, and then when you add the resource, you're adding the resources, none of the other resources are necessary to move, everyone's in its fixed positions. So he'll talk about that, just a few. Fire station 501, just to give a quick overview, is, this station was built in 1953, great price back then, $72,600. So it is a 66-year-old station. Obviously, a brick-and-mortar is designed to get you out to the 50-year mark for a fire station, and this one has certainly done that. Last time it was expanded was in 1981, 38 years ago, and that's because one of us originally built, it was built as a volunteer department, and then from a volunteer, it went to a combination with both part-time and full-time. As I mentioned, brick-and-mortar station, this one, we're, obviously, it'd be one of the stations we're looking in as we move forward, that we want to look at relocating and replacing. One of the things I know that I've heard, and we've had some discussions on this too, is what do we do with the old fire station that's there, station 501? There's a few different things we looked at, we mentioned before about, it is the welcoming as you come into the downtown area, the historic downtown area, whether it was bulldoze and create a new welcome coming in with some kind of a anchor tenant. It could be used as other cities around the state of Arizona, if you've noticed, if you go to any of those smaller towns, they've used the fire station, and it's been recreated as a restaurant downtown and even a brewery downtown. So there's some options there. Another idea we threw out for potential consideration in the future is looking to work with the historical society, put the old three fire engines back in the bay. is looking to work with the historical society, put the old three fire engines back in the bays, move all the public safety displays down there. And then our fire prevention department could move in into the office space area and be able to do education with the kids and stuff down there or have school buses come in. Just a couple of different ideas to throw out about what can you do with the the station if we move. Station five oh two, this station was built in nineteen ninety-five for two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, it's twenty-four years old. It was built uh uh by way of wood studs and stucco on the outside, so it's not a brick and mortar uh long uh long-term station for length. It also is on the property that it's on, it's limited from expansion capability. We looked and it wasn't our CIP, we were looking to put in a bay on and then adding another four or another two bunk rooms on it, just to do that was a million-two, um just to do in addition to it. And that was pretty pricey to put into that particular uh station in in price. And it still didn't take care of the needs of expanding the kitchen area or the day room uh where our firefighters um hang out, work on the computers and stuff, it's just a very tight space that's there. One of the things uh fire sta- uh staff has had discussions, again, what do we do with the property like this? Uh if we were to relocate, um this property where it's located, uh would be great for a business to be able to come in, who knows if it's automotive, whatever the type, stereo, whatever kind, there's bays to work in and a a place to conduct business. And then I know that Corner Lot is still open over there, and so who knows on bundling and what a business may would be looking for. But that's uh for station five oh two. Interim station five oh three, we opened it in two thousand and one um because of the call load and response times and we need to get uh another unit up. It is an old Casa Grande Union High School classroom trailer uh that was donated to the department back in nineteen ninety-one, or nineteen ninety-nine. And that uh trailer is from this site, was I guess on this campus uh prior to that. Um so the the classroom, when you figure it out, it's over forty years old, again, is a a wood uh classroom module unit. What would happen here is the airport uh has expressed this interest in uh for us to vacate that area so they could actually build hangars and put hangars on that property that's there um to be able to deal with the uh pilots that are on the waiting list to get a hangar. So um not much with the classroom there, but they would give them an opportunity to be able to build in and out additional hangars throughout at the airport. I'm gonna turn it over to Dave on the DECKIN.
Uh good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, I appreciate you letting me talk about this, this is what I'd like to talk about, so this'll work out. Um I want to pers- I wanted to provide a little bit of historical perspective on fire departments in the past. Um in the past, fire service leaders would use their intuition and experience to make decisions on where they were going to put fire stations. And sometimes also on where they were going to place apparatus. As with any intuitive-type decision, you're relying on that person's knowledge and experience to make the right decisions. And we all know that sometimes that doesn't happen, wrong decisions are made. I I come from a city where we built a fire station that was just absolutely in the wrong location. We ended up having to close it probably ten years after it opened because it just didn't belong there, it made no sense. And there was a lot of strange reasons that it went in there, but um we're building fire stations that cost millions of dollars, so we got to make sure that we're not incorrect. We have to be right when we recommend to you guys where a fire station should go. Um we purchased a computer program last year called DECKIN with your guys' approval. Um and it's a software that basically allows us to make critical decisions on the fire station locations using actual data instead of intuition. The historical call data is pulled from CAD, the Computer Aided Dispatch, another program that you guys upgraded last year for police and fire department. These two are, they interface together, so we're able to pull the data out of our CAD system. And the res- response times, response times are the way that a lot of people measure fire departments um service and reliability and how well they're doing, how good a job they're doing. That's a, that's a method of looking at fire departments, is how well they do on their response times. The better the response times that you have usually equates to having more manpower, more apparatus, and typically more manpower, that means more funding, so you have more money being committed to the fire department. The DECKIN program takes all the CAD data and evaluates it and then makes recommendations on where a fire station should go. And it does that um by strategically picking the best locations. It's it's intertwined also with a system, another program called ESRI, which is a GIS mapping layer. And that's a system that the city already uses. We use in GIS for like the hydrants and the road maps and traffic signals. And there's a lot of different layers that the city has of mapping. Next slide. The next map is uh it's a little confusing, but if you take a look at it, you can see the current fire station locations on there. You've got uh five oh threes uh kind of in the middle, up there under the T. Um you've got five oh fours is kind of under the L up in the north part of the city. And then you got five oh ones and five oh twos down in the south end of the city. What this map is showing you, and and I get it, it's a little bit technical because it takes GIS, it takes road conditions, it takes road configurations, traffic engineering, a lot of different factors, and works it all together and basically comes up with a map. And once I tell you, I mean you can see by looking at the map, it should be self-explanatory what we're showing here is that the grids or the little squares that are green are places that our fire engines can currently get to in less than five minutes. The yellow ones are from five to seven, and the red ones are anything over seven minutes.
How about the gray ones?
Yeah, it's the checkbox. I was just about to say. So the boxes that have the grid marks or the diagonal lines on them, those are areas that are considered no access. There's no road, or there's no, there's no uh manner or way for us to get in there. And keep in mind, it only recognizes known actual asphalt roads that are by the city. It won't, it doesn't recognize dirt roads because we don't typically go down dirt roads. Now, so there's a building fire over here on on Main Street, that's where it was headed to.
Convenient timing.
Yeah, so uh there are times when we have to go out into the desert and obviously our guys, if they have to go out into the desert, they go out into the desert. They either walk out there or they use a dirt road, but this program only uses the asphalt roads for typical responses and stuff. So I, to to really kind of break this down and make it simple, what we're attempting to do is place our fire stations so that we get the most grids green. We want to be under five minutes. And it's it's really simple, without getting too technical, that's that's the bottom line, is we want as many green boxes on there as we can get. And if we have some yellow, that's okay, what we want to do is reduce the number of red boxes. Now, you guys know the city way better than I do, but if you look way out west out there, there's red boxes that will never be able to get disappeared. I mean, we just, we can't, you don't put a fire station out by Francisco Grande to to handle the one or two or three calls that we have out there here.
Chief, do you have a breakdown of like population density, like that are?
Well, you mean number of calls based?
I I don't have that, but I I have other stuff.
But you know, like is ninety percent of the population in the?
Yeah, and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit, I can put it in here, but I mean basically the Florence corridor. You can see the Florence corridor by looking at the map, and on the next slide, if you go to the next slide, Chief. If you look at the next slide, there's a street overlay on there, and it should be really obvious. You guys, again, you guys know the city better than I do. That Florence corridor, seventy percent of our calls are on the Florence corridor. And that's why five oh ones and five oh twos are very busy. Uh and five oh threes and five oh fours, we still have to protect the houses, we still have to protect the citizens in the north end of the city. But seventy percent of our calls are down here in this Florence corridor. And I and I call the Florence corridor basically down to Jimmy Kerr, up to Cottonwood, I mean that's where seventy percent of our calls are. But the other thirty percent of the calls, they're not any less important or any more s- less serious. Or when somebody's house is burning up up in the north, it's just as important as the one on Florence, so we still have to protect those. And that's kind of the goal of the fire department, is to strategically place apparatus and people so you can provide the best response times. So what DECKIN does, that's what DECKIN does, it it tells us, and we're able to punch in and say, we'd like to see what the city would look like with six fire stations, we'd like to see what it would look like with seven fire stations. And then what we do is we pull or close stations down in that. And the the program is uh intuitive, in fact, that if I say, okay, close this station, it changes the time. So we can say, I want to see what the city should look like with four stations, I want to see what it looks like with five, I want to see what it looks like with six. So that ten years from now, we don't look back at the city and go, oh man, we built that station in the wrong spot. So we have a station that we can't move, we have, we have station five oh four that's in the spot. That station can't move, whether it's the right location or the wrong location, we can't move it, it's a new station. But the other three stations don't meet a lot of the health and safety codes, they don't meet a lot of OSHA requirements, they don't meet hardly any of the NFPA requirements, and the the stations are just old and run down. And they're, um it's time that they're replaced. I know all of you care deeply about firefighter safety and our conditions that our firefighters, and I know that because I've talked to all you guys and you guys have all talked to me about it. So that's kind of why we're coming to you with this, because we want to make sure we tell you the right spots or make the right recommendations on where you're going to spend this money to build fire stations. When we look at fire stations and um these things, the big, the big thing that we're looking at is the value of the time, is the travel time, it's from when we're dispatched until when we go in or out, until when we go on scene. So we're, we're basically evaluating those times very seriously. And we kind of already talked about it, but I'll I'll give you an example of the program, another thing with DECKIN, one of the, one of the examples is, it's it's a computer program. So we still have to look at it and pay, just because it says, I'll give you an example, if if the, if DECKIN said place five, five oh ones really should be at the southeast corner of Cottonwood and Penant. Could we do that? Of course we couldn't do that, they just built a brand-new Jack-in-the-Box there, we couldn't put a fire station there because they just put a brand-new restaurant there. So we have to, we have to guide it or look at it and make sure that it's selecting the correct locations. And that's obviously not something we do alone, we have to do that in collaboration with Mr. Tice in planning a building, because it may say, hey, there's a great space for a building right here. Well, that, that's land that's owned by the state. And that's not where we're going to be able to put a fire station. So there's a lot of work and time and energy that goes into it, but I just, the reason we're trying to tell you this, all this stuff is it's kind of all a big system, this stuff all fits together, it's all intertwined together. And that when we make recommendations to you, we're basing it, we're not basing it on our intuition and experience, we're basing it on scientific data coupled with our experience. I think you're getting a uh a good recommendation in terms of those standards. Obviously, we talked a little bit about it, but our our city, we always have to take into account our geography versus our call load. We typically have to rely more heavily on our call load, because if we relied on geography, you know, we'd have to come in here and tell you, we need ten stations to cover this whole geography. Well, that doesn't make sense, we don't have the money for that, so we would never do that. Um that's basically DECKIN in a nutshell. We just kind of wanted to give you a brief overview of that, let you guys see it. And we'll probably sit down and meet with you again to kind of show you and let you look at DECKIN, because this is not a decision that's going to be made today or or anytime soon. Um but we'll have to look at it and see where it's saying those stations are and and obviously with Mr. Tice, to see if it's zoned correctly and all that different stuff, so. That's it for DECKIN.
And uh just to tie in with uh what Dave was saying, uh some of the benefits for relocating the the three stations is to provide a five-minute or less response to our community. With playing with the system and uh moving the stations and having it tell us where it goes, we're currently like at a five-minute, twenty-three second. And there's potentials that you can drop it down below there, you know, lesser times. It just depends on where the station goes and then it recalculates and tells you. You know, I don't want to come in and tell you, we're going to drop it to four-thirty or what have you. It depends on where they actually end up going and how much it reduces down. Um but it does give us a better coverage of what we're looking for, and and we're looking at where our population is at. Uh we're able to add resources in the future as needed, as Chief had indicated, we can go up with additional. The stations, by replacing them, we're looking newer, modern, energy-efficient fire stations uh built to last fifty-plus years, and I would use station five oh one as that proof that that can happen. Um by doing uh the three stations, we look at replacing the sixty-six-year-old and eighteen-year-old interim that is actually forty-plus years old, uh replace a twenty-four-year-old station that not built for the long term. And also by looking at this, it does defer building station five oh four out. I can't tell you how long, I don't have a crystal ball. Population, what's happening, I wouldn't want to take a guess and say X years. It's just, it will defer building that out.
Can I add on to that, Chief?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to say one more thing about the dis- I mean, you guys all understand DECKIN now and you see what and in the whole scheme of things, when we say that the average response time would drop, you know, thirty seconds or forty-five seconds or drop a minute, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's huge. When you're talking about uh nine thousand calls to drop the average by forty-five seconds or a minute, I mean, try to hold your breath right now, stop breathing right now, try to hold your breath for forty-five seconds, you can't, it's very difficult to do this. So uh by knocking forty-five cent seconds off the response time, that is huge. That's, that's what we rely on, we rely on um response times are critical to us for fires, it's critical to us for emergencies. Um and I, I just, I, that, that knocking forty-five seconds or a minute off our average response time for that many calls is a huge thing.
Inhalation of smoke is one of the most deadly things, isn't it, Rips?
Absolutely, yes, sir. And and there's a lot of studies and stuff.
If you could get there, then the, the less uh those people would be in jeopardy if you could get them out of there.
That's correct, and if you look at the studies and stuff, uh you know, our our response time on fires, NFPA wants us to be our first arriving unit to be there within four minutes. And there's reasons that they say four minutes. The four-minute uh guideline is kind of a, that's a a thing where they say, if you get there within four minutes, you might be able to possibly have the best chance of confining it to the room of origin or the area of origin. Once you go past four, five, six, seven, eight minutes, now it's spreading to other rooms, the attic, all over the house. And I, we, you guys have seen examples of that here in Casa Grande a number of times. Because sometimes it does take, it's a long time to get to calls.
So Chief, you said that our response time now is five minutes, twenty-three seconds, so what's the overall average across the country?
There's no overall average across the country, because there, all the fire departments across the country are so diverse and different.
Okay.
Um you know, where I, my old place that I came from, we had twenty-four stations. And our response time was was not five minutes and twenty-three seconds, it was higher than that. So um it it's completely dependent. This city's a little bit unusual in that it's suburban, urban, and it's, you know, if you're right here, you're in the city. So um it changes greatly depending on where you are. Some places in Pennsylvania and North Carolina, there's a lot of volunteer fire departments. And maybe, you know, they're just going out to squirt water on the house that that burned down already.
Back at the beginning in five oh one, Gene Lehman and his partner, that was their hotel also, as well as a volunteer fire department.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
We're not done yet, though. I'm still going, sir.
I just let it go for a minute.
Yeah, don't hold your breath. Although we have highly-trained personnel that's in this room.
Exactly.
The the next item, I kind of touched about with the relocation of stations, is looking, how do we fund that kind of a project? And uh our proposal is the consideration on looking at a geo-bond uh for the funding mechanism for that. Um what that geo-bond would look at would be to be able to purchase three parcels of land. And we're not telling you where those parcels of land are at, because we want to wait until later on, um keep our costs down. Uh you want to build three brick-and-mortar fire stations so that you know they're going to be good for fifty years and that we're putting them in the correct places to build them. And we also, when we move out of the airport, we need to be looking at what are we going to do for our training center. So this does uh provide us over a three-to-five-year period of time to be able to phase in a new training center in the industrial park uh where we can uh conduct a live-fire training at. Uh estimated bond we're looking at is a twenty-million-dollar bond. Estimated bond we're looking at is a $20 million bond. Obviously, it would have to be through a special bond election in which city manager and yourself would determine what's appropriate and when to do that. The current pricing for fire stations right now, depend upon what you're looking at. As of today, it could be anywhere from $350 a square to $500 a square. It depends on what kind of land preparation, what do you need to do, drainage areas, leveling it off, et cetera, et cetera. Whether you've got to have additional roadways come in, how far are utilities away, what's your FF and E for it? So that's where that square ranges would play into for this. Yes, sir.
What was the cost on Station 4? Because I saw that 20 million, I thought that was a little light.
Station 4 was 3.5 million when we built that, with the land and roadway improvements, everything in that one.
Okay, thank you.
It's gone up by about 40% since then, though.
It all depends on, yes, some of the areas are much higher.
About 40%.
What was?
Construction cost.
Oh, construction.
Yeah, that's what our architect right now, as of today, this is the range we're looking at for a particular station to be built.
Do you know the dollar? Like, how many square feet are we looking at? So the dollar, Matt?
I do not have that with me, too. I don't want to guess at what our last station was. We were talking about that tonight before dinner and they were trying to locate the square footage for me.
So you came up with the 20 million based on what, Chief?
Based on three fire stations at about four mil to four and a half mil each, depending upon what.
But that's just a guess, what you're saying is.
Yeah, and that's just my rough estimate, which I felt good hearing what the dollars were because it actually lowers it for me. And then the balance of that for the training center.
So when we do these bonds and that, does that, will that also include equipment and to outfit the? It doesn't, does it?
No, our, what you do is your FF and E. So whatever you have to put in there, tables, chairs, beds, ovens, refrigerators, all that in a station. As far as that for us, equipment, we already have that that moves into those stations.
But as far as, yeah, furniture, furniture.
Is that included in that?
Yes, that's included in there. Your FF and E is built into your square footage pricing. So basically, what we're looking at is we've been looking at a solution, trying to bring everything in and show how it all can help feed and progress forward for the department to provide coverage within our community, to enhance the service, work on our response times, et cetera. So we've touched base on how all these are linked together. The SAFER grant, obviously, is a huge impetus for us with the million seven to come in over a three-year period to be able to provide to 10 additional firefighters. Gives us the six for the low-acuity units. So we could get that up and running. And then the same way with the additional rover and then from the EMS side. We've touched a little bit about the low-acuity unit, the value of that pilot program, the CON, the value that would bring to our community, would control our destiny and continuing to provide additional response units in the city. The EMS oversight that we would need with the battalion chief's position in there for all of our EMS, I mean, it's very, getting very, very complicated on everything we have to do. And then the fire station geo bond for the location of those stations when they're built. They're built to be able to house those additional personnel and those units that be going in, very similar to what Station 504 is, that is outfitted so you can add additional resources. Something that I wanted to tie in is back in 2015, we did do a department strategic plan that we had discussed. And there was, we did some key result areas. And we talked about enhancing our operational capacities. And we looked at a couple of items with standards of coverage, which we created that. Maintaining our ISO rating of a four, while we've increased it to a three, we bettered that one off. And then we wanted to establish two-year hiring list for firefighters and create a list to be able to do that. We've done that for, since 2015, we've had that going. And our process that we do on the hiring list is outstanding because we have very, very good personnel that come through that process that we offer positions to. We also looked at another key result area was alternative funding. What kind of funding can the department be looking at to help? Because we know the revenue's tight in the city. We looked at fire recovery and we brought that up. And it wasn't really a popular thing and wasn't made for us to move forward with. We talked about the CON, which we've been talking about, did the feasibility study on. We're looking at the wildland opportunity, which we do participate in the wildland. It does bring in some revenue for us in that area. Look at grants, we've done very, very well in grants. Bonding was another item that we had listed down there as alternative to be looking at. We did do our research into it, talked at an ELT level. We've brought it up for the budget process and CIP. And then the last key result area we looked at in our strategic plan was data and what can we do with analysis? And like I mentioned earlier, we did our replacement of our new CAD. And we have a new record management system that comes with that CAD. Our image trend is our EMS record management system. And we got DECKIN in ADAM, which is the analytic piece of it that we've done. So the items we identified back in 2015 in the department strategic plan, you can see where everything is continuing to move forward for us there. So what's the next step in the timelines? What we're looking at is next council meeting will be an item on there for your consideration as far as accepting the grant from the SAFER grant from Department Homeland Security of that $1.7 million and change, almost 1.8. Then we'll be looking in the future about academy classes. What we're looking at is we want to put six firefighters in the first class and we want to put four firefighters in the second class is what our recommendation's going to be. We know that in January and February, we have a couple of classes coming up with academies, which is Northwest Fire and Mesa Fire. They've both done a great job for us in the past. We would utilize that. And then Northwest is looking at another one in July and Mesa may be looking at one in June. So we're just waiting to see what may happen and split them out. The reason we wouldn't do all 10 at once is that would be two firefighters per shift. We would want to put them at our, obviously, our two busiest stations for their probation period. Gives them time to learn and adapt and learn what the city's about. It's a lot of work for our captains and our firefighters and engineers that work with those probationary firefighters because they give a lot of attention because we want them to see them succeed after probation. And then when they can move over, then we can move another four in and we're not overloading, not being fair to the guys we're hiring and not being fair to our crews that are already out there working. So that's what we'd be looking at there. The low-acuity unit, we would be able to start staffing that up full-time after graduation, which would be around in June. And we would be able to get them on board right away because we've got the rescue unit to put the personnel in and start doing the low-acuity. As far as the Casa Grande CON, we would again ask for your consideration and approval on our application. The application process is what would be done through our consultants, J.B. Vincent Group. And that would go through a process that we mentioned before. It would take at least six months to put an application together and to go back and forth with Q and A with the Department of Health Services and submit that CON at that point in time. The additional rovers, we would be able to, with the SAFER grant, be able to look at after the second row, second dates for academy classes. We'd be looking at a November, December to get that third rover on and be able to start utilizing them for coverage for the benefits. Same timeframe, November, we'd be able to get the EMS BC up and onboard and start having that as a major focal point with all the requirements that are necessary for EMS. And then the fire station geo bond, we would look at your consideration and approval at a council meeting to move forward based on special elections date. Again, that would be between the city manager and yourselves. And then the voters would decide a special election. Larry had mentioned about March 21st, 2020 as a potential. So that's what I have up there. These are some steps in timelines. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Chief, I have a question for you. The SAFER grant, that's a three-year grant in terms, right? So it ends, is there application process to continue that or is it just a one?
No, that is to get your firefighters back up. It's, they'll pay like a third, a third, or repay a third, a third. And then at the end, we're paying two-thirds. And they do vice versa, two-thirds, two-thirds, and a third over that three-year period. Then year four, it's up to us at that point.
So then all 10 of those positions are on the city?
They'll be full on the city at that point in time.
Can you resubmit the grant?
Only if I have frozen positions, if we have decided that economy and we have downturn, then that's what you apply for the SAFER to try to get that back up. This was looking at how can we move forward, get that low-acuity unit up, move forward with the CON process? Because the CON process, when you move forward with that, that provides the additional revenue then to sustain after that fourth year. And I don't know what our economy's going to look like in four years from now. It could be very positive and things moving in a great direction. I mean, it's doing great now, going in a good direction. But I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah, no, I just was just answering a question. I, low-acuity idea, I think it makes sense since majority of the calls that, you know, that they go on are medical and related, you know, medical-related. So it seems like a better use of our equipment. But just trying to think, how do we fund it long, long-range, that's all. Mr. Paul?
One, just to follow up from what the mayor was saying. It'd be interesting to have you guys work out what, with using four ambulances, how much money that would save on gas per annum and how much it would save on replacement necessity per annum.
We are right in the middle of an update with our DECKIN system and that's one of the things that we've added is.
Yes, so our savings are.
We'll be able to evaluate that and we'll be able to actually come up with a good prediction on response times as well.
A couple of quick, would it be a challenge to hire the 10 qualified people? Do you guys get enough applicants every time you?
We currently have a two-year hiring list and we've only gone down the first 10 or 11. And been filling with retirements and that that we've had. Or if someone got picked up at a Mesa, Tempe, or Phoenix.
And then speaking about the DECKIN program, I would like to see, too, the map was helpful with the red, but what's the percentage of population that would be served by? You know, because you even said some of the red will never, I mean, will never get unread.
Where's the volume?
You know what I'm saying? Like, if it's 80% of the population is in the green-yellow area, that will get a five-minute response time or what, that would be helpful, too. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I can do that. I mean, I can actually provide you.
I mean, I think that street map is pretty.
I can actually provide you one of these.
Probably pretty close.
And if it's a pink square, it means there was three or less calls there last year.
Okay.
And the other ones, the little kind of mixed blue, it's 25 or less calls last year. And the other ones, 300-plus calls. The darker color. So 300-plus of the calls were in those darker circles. I'll get you guys a copy.
Yeah, and from your Facebook page, I did a very simple math because that's all I'm good at. But it says like about 65% of your calls were medical.
70% right now.
Okay. That's just from, like I said, just from your quick stat on Facebook. But I'm a, I have been a proponent of the low-acuity unit for a long time, as you know. And I think that would be a great thing to save us money. But we got to figure out how we're going to do that with this grant and everything, how we can sustain that.
Are you finding her posts about the call loads informative on Facebook that she's been putting on there?
Oh, I like, yeah. You guys have a great Facebook page and it lets people know you guys are. And I was kind of joking, they're like right in the middle of your presentation, obviously. There's a big incident.
We didn't sign that, I promise.
Yeah. While you had to pause for effect, but thank you. And thank you guys for coming tonight. So it'd be interesting to hear more. You know, it's a good introduction here.
One of the, one of the other things that I can provide to the city managers, we did a few years ago, we did the population density, suburban, urban, and rural on each one of our squares around the city. And that's what we were basing on. One of the things we use when we're relocating or locating a new station is what was all going to happen in those areas. So I can provide that to the city manager.
How often do we get land donated for a fire station? If it's in the right place, we wouldn't take the land just.
During the development meetings, when we used to have the all-day Wednesday meetings.
I knew that some of them we.
We have around seven parcels that have been designated in different areas. But most of those are in the outline, surrounding area for those future growth. And they're all required minimum of three acres. And I believe we had two that were potentially five.
Okay, so three acres, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you both for the presentation because you gave us a lot of information. But I'm going to ask for follow-up, not tonight, I don't expect you to know it. But I want to go back to the manpower piece, the current manpower, because you had talked about PTO and denial, you know, because you don't have enough coverage. I'm kind of interested in finding out the percentage that PTO that has been denied because there wasn't anybody to fill a shift. I'm curious about that. And I don't know if you can provide that, but I think that that's important for us to know. And then you also mentioned 9,000 hours of overtime. And I'm curious to find out how that was covered, you know, under budget. Was it, you know, sometimes it's by grants? And I don't want it tonight, I'm curious how.
We don't have any grants that are available for us to cover any overtime. We go through the city manager and the budgeting process and we put all the hours in there for the overtime that is asked for. When I said that people aren't always being able to get their PTO is because we only allow two off.
Correct.
And it's all done through a computer system that they will apply for time off. First two that are in there get that. Anybody else put in for that, they get a rejection. So I don't know if I can pull that out or not. I have to check with the software.
So obviously, that's a concern to me for firefighters that are with us now.
It does, it does happen. I mean, I get calls all the time. Sometimes the battalion chief will call me and say, hey, this guy's got such and such going on and it's an emergency. And sometimes we have to grant him. I mean, I'd be willing to bet, everybody can raise their hand and say it's happened to them before.
Right, okay.
It does happen.
And then you had mentioned something about the current stations and they're not up to code and OSHA issues and things like that. Do you feel, is that strictly because it's a fire station? Or do you think because of building itself would hinder a resale value if we were going to go out and sell it?
No, there's very specific regulations and health and safety and OSHA requirements and NFPA requirements for fire stations. A good example right now, I know that you've been, probably spoken to a lot about the second set of turnouts. Well, right now, 501s, when you get off the rig at the end of the shift, you hang your turnouts on the wall right there next to the firing channel. Well, that's a known amount. Now, turnouts go in a room with a sealed door so that the fumes and the, basically, all the chemicals that are being released from those coats aren't going all over the station. They're in that room and they're removed through a ventilation system. 504 has that, but.
Right, so it's specific to fire, not just the building in general?
Correct, yeah. If you go to 501s, you've been in 501s. If you go to 501s and 504s, there's a big difference. At 501s, all the pipes, the gas lines, electrical lines, everything's on the brick walls in the station. There's stuff that's been abandoned, stuff that's not used anymore. You go to 504s, it's built into the walls. The alarm systems are built into the station. It's designed as a fire station. They didn't think about those things in 1953 when they were building that fire station. I love the building, it's just not suited to be a fire station anymore.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you on the SAFER grant. I mean, that's really exciting. You know, this is something that, you know, we all really supported and we were excited to see the results of the low-acuity. And of course, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to fund it to continue. But it's something that comes up every year in the budget season and we all talk about and we know, you know, what a great program is. So I really commend you for putting that grant together and obviously a very successful grant. So thank you very much. I'm really, really excited about that. But again, how are we going to fund it after those three years? You know, critical, I know, as the mayor indicated. So, you know, I think, you know, it's important for us to, because the consultant gave us revenue estimates. So I think it's going to be important to kind of visit those again. I would think that if we accept this grant before we hire those ten firefighters, we can look at, get that, right? Can't we look at it and just kind of get an idea of the revenue and how we can fund it over those three years and whatever, um, you know, how it can apply to, you know, at, or after the three years.
Yeah, there's more cost. There's costs in there. You mentioned eight hundred gallons of diesel fuel. Well, that's a cost. And it's cost savings, so what is that cost saving?
Yeah.
So. There's savings, there's savings in the whole package. The, the rovers, the rovers are going to provide savings as well.
Yeah, so I think it's just going to be important for us to just kind of refresh it, yeah.
If it reduces overtime, then that's great.
Right. Uh, but yeah, no, and of course, the CON, you know, there's been so much discussion and we're, you know, I know I'm excited about moving forward on that. Um, as far as the, the question I have is, when, if you hire those ten firefighters, do you kind of, um, do, do those new ones go straight to the low acuity and, so you kind of mix it?
Absolutely not. My, my intent, and that's one of the reasons we've talked about hiring six and four.
Mm-hmm.
Our firing, when we get a, I don't want to point to one of the new guys, but there's new guys out there, so.
He volunteered.
I don't put that new guy with another new guy sitting in the back of the firing. That new guy goes with an experienced seasoned veteran in the back.
Right.
And that's the reason why I can't, we can't hire ten people all at the same time because I don't have, I don't have the seats to put them in.
To train them and everything.
So, that's why we put six and six. Because we typically put, uh, guys at five oh ones and five oh twos and then we flip-flop them because five oh twos has a ladder truck, so they get the busy stuff. And then eventually, they rotate out to five oh threes so that they learn how to use the brush truck and the ladder tender that's there. And they go to five oh fours to learn how to work the utility and get some hazmat from the utilization. They don't do that till the very end of their probation period.
Okay.
Till we decide if we're going to keep them.
Okay.
We don't want to waste it.
And, and the, the question you had about, uh, going on low acuity, that'll be up to the captain at that fire station. They'll have that personnel, a man, and they're responsible for the management of those personnel. And that's an opportunity for them to rotate off of the engine onto the, to the low acuity unit and vice versa. And then it also helps on the, the skills level.
Okay. And then, um, finally, you know, I know that strategic plan was done in two thousand fifteen, but I do want to thank you for just keeping on top of it. I mean, it, it's a vision and I really appreciate you, you know, just revisiting it and see where we are and how we can move forward and seeing where the city is going to go. Because we, we have a lot going on, um, you know, with businesses coming in, with housing. So, I really appreciate, I know sometimes it feels as though we're not listening. I mean, many of you that are here that don't normally come to the meetings, it might seem as though we're not listening. But, you know, it is important that, you know, the chief continues to update us on the vision and how we're going to move forward ten years from now. So, we, we do listen and i- it's just a matter of, you know, how can, how can we fund this, what can we do? But, um, but I just, I just really appreciate that. I know that exercise, you know, always seems like it's a pain, but, but, but it's important and I know, Chief, that you continue, both of you, continue to keep on that and, and update us. So, um, I thank you for that. And I, and I do appreciate, you know, the, um, some of the, the firefighters here tonight. I mean, I, you know, we, we'd like seeing you here. Please come anytime. But it's important for, for people to see, you know, what we're doing and some of the issues that we face, making some of the decisions on policy and everything else, so. So anyways, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions is, is, uh, it sounds like the CON is going to go forward and pretty much is a very realistic, it's going to happen?
Well, that's, hasn't been voted on yet.
That's your decision.
There's, there was so much conversation on it and that and I'm, you know, I'm really in favor of that and really want to see that go through. The other thing is I really like the idea of that placement of these fire stations are data-driven and need-driven and not that, oh, well, let's, we need something east, west, south, north and that. I like the idea that it's data-driven. I'd like to know a little bit more about the density in the red areas, uh, because of that's the potential that there could be. And finally is, so we hear brick and mortar and we hear that and just what's the advantages? I know that, you know, personally, I'd like to have brick and mortar, but there's the expense in that. When building a fire station, is that really very beneficial to have, quote, a brick and mortar station?
You, you look at it for longevity and that is one way of doing longevity is through the brick and mortar versus two-by-four construction. Uh, I mean, we, we live in there twenty-four, seven.
Okay, okay. Just kind of, I, I saw that and I kind of wondered about as far as that.
Yes, go ahead, Chief.
We have, uh, over a hundred square miles in our corporate limits. And when you talk about trying to distribute and know where things, when Lucid and, uh, Atessa come in, there's going to be a huge amount of development out in that sector. And one of the things, we're doing our general plan right now and, and Paul knows, we go outside our corporate limits with our plan. Uh, but the, uh, trying to work with developers to, to build the fire stations in their areas for us uh, would, would be a really good plan. I mean, they've even talked about maybe some of them to have their own fire department if it's that much removed. But I think if we can, if we can get some money from the developers, uh, into the, uh, construction business on our, at least on the fire departments, because if you guys have to keep building these things, it's, it's going to get expensive. Even geo bonds are going to get old. But I think that at least that's something that can be discussed and hopefully we could achieve.
That, that's been a really successful model in, in places. Orange County, California is a perfect example. As they were building tracks, they were having the developers assist with that. I don't think we have quite the same situation here.
Right.
But when, when you are building stuff, you do want to look at, at that. And, and that's the, the, when you say you guys, you guys are the ones that are going to be paying to build the fire stations.
All of us, yeah, we all get paid.
That's what you can get the bucks for, so.
Paul, you have a comment?
Yeah, a, a comment and then a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for all the information. You guys have really done your homework. I'm a thumbs up on all of this. I mean, it's just a question of when we can do it. Um, I have experience with this type of a grant in the police department. And my, my somewhat biased opinion is we're almost foolish to not take advantage of, of that. It's a, it's a great opportunity. My, my other question is on the low acuity unit. This is a question first, but are we, are we missing a component in dispatch? It seems to me like it's going to be a much higher level of triage at the dispatch level to get to the point that we're, uh, confident in sending out a, a BLS unit alone. And are we at that point with dispatcher? Do we need to look at, uh, resources there as well?
Well, first off, we did implement this past year and all of our dis- dispatchers are certified now through a program for, uh, priority dispatching. And they do have certain questions that are asked on different calls to determine what level that is to respond. So, we did do that and every dispatcher has been through that program. The new dispatchers, as they come out of training, will go through that program also.
Okay, thank you. The, the other thing that kind of jumped out at me was the assessment of calls for service over the last ten years. Um, it, it went up by sixty percent. And my question is, is there, is there other mitigating factors other than population? Because it seems like we outpaced our population times two, uh, in, in that figure. Our population went up about thirty percent. Our calls for service went up about sixty.
Um, one of the things we got to be looking at now, and I fall into this category, is the baby boomers. And there's going to be a lot of us hitting that area in which is going to increase on our medical call load. So, that's even, we're, we're going to see it exponentially go up.
Well, I, I will assemble that comment, so.
And it's not unusual for your department, call loads to increase three or four percent a year. That's typically what they do increase now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good job, guys.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I can just, uh, again, thank the council for your patience tonight. I know there's a lot of items that were bundled into these study sessions this evening. There's some policy decisions that you're going to be considering here very quickly. And we did not want to ask you to consider those individually without more of a global vision of what is transpiring. So, that was why we covered so much tonight. There is one point that I want to, uh, make a correction perhaps, uh, because I see Mr. McGuire perhaps posting on social media and I want to make sure that it's accurate. The, uh, when, when we talk about the geo bond, it's unlikely that we would be able to go to our voters before 2021. Not March 21st, 2020. That's only six months away. They've already called that election. It's, we're, we're out to 2021 at the earliest. And so ultimately, I just want to make sure that's clear for, for Mr. McGuire so that we don't put our community on tilt. Uh, but I also, and, and to make sure that the council's aware of that. But that would likely be a policy decision that ultimately is going to come after all of a couple of these other decisions that the mayor and council is going to be making.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments, any questions?
Thank you both for your presentation tonight. And thanks to everybody else for, for coming also in support of that. We'll stand adjourned. It's now about five after. We'll start at seven fifteen, ten minutes, seven fifteen.
That long?
Okay.